Tim Ramirez.
Fantastic.
He was on the council.
Yeah. He was for many. He has red hair and kids. So he's in charge of controlling.
Different assignments. Okay. Let's go ahead and call our cash county council government meetings to order. Thank you everybody for your time in their second hour meeting. Appreciate you coming tonight. We're beginning at five oh two P M. We have a form here, so we'll go ahead and go forward. Uh, we'll go ahead and start with introductions. We'll start with Megan.
Megan Isaac for the minutes.
I'm paying the trend.
David there Millville.
Larry Jacobson nibbly.
Paul Erickson Richmond.
It's Monson Smithville.
Clay Pride River Heights.
Holly Danes Logan.
David Wood.
Bethany Miller Fire.
Lindsay Peterson North Logan.
Our constant party.
Barbara Tidwell County Council.
Uh, Mayor Albert just stepped out, but she's here. My mayor Craig Hidalgo from Clarkson.
Jeff Gil, Gilbert Castle for Cog.
Jesse Mall, Cash County stops the fog.
Good. Next we need to uh to approve the agenda. Do I have motions?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, what Mayor Peterson from.
On second.
Mayor Danes. All in favor?
I'm.
You opposed? No, it would be if somebody opposed anyway.
Did you coordinate that?
Yes. Yeah, I talked.
Okay, next we'll look at the minutes of the January twenty seventh.
And for those of you that were in the previous meeting, I was confused to name the amendment for what should have been the cog minute on that. Megan said she transferred that with everyone's approval to this meeting. I I read both the minutes in preparing and I just made the motion for the long meeting, so sorry everyone.
We accepted it, so it's our problem.
For those that weren't here, it was just an update to the plan for when they're closing Main Street for the underpass. Oh, during the day and the night, just for those mayors that weren't here, there was a correction to that.
So if there are none others, I'm happy to move approval of the January twenty seventh.
We have motions. All in favor?
I'm.
Any approved? Okay, the minister approved. Okay. Our next agenda is consider amending the local transportation. Program manual, so Jessica go ahead and talk that. We had very minor changes because if you recall in our last meeting, we told you go ahead and go forward. What do you recommend?
Yeah, so since we met last time, again, when I sent it out, you let the league, everything in red had already been discussed. And if you can have that, but it was all kind of discussed and there was no conversation at that time. When I went through and kind of reread it, we made a few tweaks. And that shot in green and that was just kind of moving paragraphs around. I reread the man or a few spots that didn't make sense. And then there were a few small edits that were added and we hi- I highlighted those in yellow. So I just wanted to go through those new co- new settings that were added. Just so that everyone's on board for stuff that hasn't been seen or would be new to come before the cog. So the first one is that on page seven, it says further down. A project called project eligibility flow chart. And it just references going to appendix I. And then appendix I shows this new flow chart. So what that pretty much did was just take the process from the policy manual to determine whether it was an object and if you were eligible for rural set aside or spot improvement, just put that in a flow chart. Because sometimes it was hard when you were reading through to follow that. So and not really new content there, but just taking it from different paragraphs and putting it into a flow chart.
Jesse, I thought that's very.
Go ahead.
Oh, I just Jesse, that was very, I thought that was really good.
I did too. I appreciated what he did. We talked about the executive meeting. Uh, is there any discussion? I want to take some minutes to everybody to look at this for sure. It's kind of inside. And see if we have any questions whatsoever on this. It's a really good flow chart.
Again, it was kind of just taking what was already in the policy manual as across it. And just kind of change spelling that out. So again, you're going to start up here in this corner. And it will walk you through different processes and if hey, you're not eligible where you are and again, spot improvements or anything of rural areas, it spells that out. So I think it's correct. Again, I failed to be pulled to the language over this, but if you run into an issue, let me know, but I think we've represented the magnet list with this diagram, so.
Okay.
The other change that we added was the talk, last time we made a couple of tweaks to be able to count donated right away in the praise. Donated or if you purchased it in the in the past and being able to use for some of your matching going forward, your pro- going towards the projects. With the change in the funding schedule where we're kind of awarding projects on the thirty percent design and then giving them that year to acquire some of that right of way. This just says, hey, as long as you've obtained that before construction, then some of that can be used as match if you've obtained it over that year where we kind of adjusted the funding schedule. So we've made some tweaks to sections of that. Last spring when we went through this process and then this just adds that to this section as well. The other one is as we met with the cog executive committee, we talked about requiring some project signage. When you're, when the projects go to construction, so this kind of outlines, hey, when we have this big things and we're using some cog money, which is the sales tax.
The quick question on the right away.
Yes.
Does that mean you have to have full acquisition? Are you able to work with a right of occupancy?
I know your specific situation.
Well, it makes sense.
In which you're talking about. That was a call eligible expense. We're trying to use it for your match. So in that sense, it was a thought that was eligible for. So if you're trying to come back and say, hey, we've had all this right over here donated. Then we're looking to try to have that done before you will have your project out to construction.
Yeah, back to your other highlighted, it states that it has to be done before everything had to be acquired prior to bidding. So I was just wondering if you could apply a right of occupancy and bid. Rather than have full acquisitions and continue negotiations.
I think you just stick with the property acquisition as written. And then you'd you'd have the right of ob- or sorry, you'd have those expenses if they're after your bid, they'd be eligible for as part of the funding for the project.
Sorry, I'm you, I'm just trying to think.
My my recommendation would be to include a uh, an agreement for purchase in the form of the right of occupancy or something. But does that always have the value nailed down about?
No, and this is for right of way that's used for match and not property that's been purchased as part of the cog project. It's if you're going out and negotiating those and then trying to use it towards the match.
So we're trying to reward people who go in beforehand and secure the right of way. I don't think right of occupancy needs that.
If you're still buying the right of way, that's upon eligible expense, that can happen eight times during the project or through that talk.
This this is just you, if if you, if you as a city of Lent and started buying Corral or in the last ten years, whatever the value of that is, we allow that to count in your map. To incentivize it. But right of occupancy, that wouldn't really apply. That would be something that come in with the project.
So you factor that into your ass.
Yeah, again, I think Palm said, yeah, or I guess.
It's probably not an isolated, yes, and that's why there is such a tool as a right of occupancy.
And it used to be that it was due at time of application. But now what we're giving people that experience go acquire the right of way, negotiate those things.
Which is my recommendation.
I think, uh, let me think on that. If we move forward with how it is now to do, to come back to something that we could have, we could always amend. Again, at a later.
We can run some of the executive committee to serve tasks, just interpret the manual.
Yeah, I'm here and I'll go figure that out.
We utilize them.
So we take that.
Yeah, we can discuss it and we can come back to that. If you need to come back with something we can as well. So as we've kind of talked about. We are utilizing tax dollars to fund these projects and a lot of them probably don't know that these projects are being utilized. Paid for and funded by the cog. This provision requires as part of the projects, again, if you're doing construction or maintenance and rulers on those projects, that we require some signage to be put it on the ends of the projects that say, hey, this was funded by the cash credit council. Friends to kind of hey, recognize that they're paying those sales tax. They can see their tax dollars at work in the community. So there's a little bit of just, hey, we wanted it. You should have the project name. This project was funded with the cash credit council of governments, local transportation funds. Generally, one sign should be located at each access point of the project. Some general size requirements are big enough that it can be read. And then prior to construction and state throughout. So again, that's something that again, can be put in your bids and required by your contractor to install a part of their project, but help bring that understanding that, hey, there is this group and again, today I think we collected is in process twenty five million dollars. So that is a lot of money that's gone into transportation projects and the general community probably doesn't recognize where those projects are, how much that really has improved the transportation network with with those taxes, so.
Not to add to the worry, this should we include the cash county council in there? Because it really is a partnership.
Isn't that cash county council of governments? Would you say cash county council, county council of governments?
Technically, we're a partner with the county council on that, but I.
Yeah, what we're trying to draw attention to is what the cog has made a decision on by the vote of all the mayors and counties. To say, hey, this is what we're doing.
Yeah, and you have cash county prominently in that.
I mean, this is going to be the minimum and if you want to, all right, your city logos go on there, those type of things. Those are all have a contact number and if you'll question, that's all the extra stuff as well, but the bare minimum for this year.
The purpose is to gain awareness within county of just what the cog is providing throughout the county.
I think that's great.
A lot of things you looked at last year, some of the questions we had with the phone, like who's, oh, who's calling? Well, as I drive around, like you said, point out, well, Congress that, talk to that. And people don't realize what the cog is funding. And we need to get that visibility out there.
People don't realize just how much has been spent.
Right.
When would this take effect?
As you go for the how the how this is typically been is that we, we haven't like, if we make a change, made it go back to prior year. Years typically things will pay if we approved it for this year, then the project goes forward. So again, this is something anyone can always add to their projects that have already been awarded that will go, it would be more of a requirement for this year's projects that go through the upcoming funding cycle. We encourage it though, if there is time you can put it into your existing bid spec, that you just have the contractor install the sign. If you can make a word going back, do it.
Don't make it difficult. Do you have questions on that?
Make sure they don't run over it.
Yeah.
Ready to take action on this tonight?
The hope is that we can pass this tonight. So that is the hope that again, the intentions today were small and we're hoping that we can pass. The other we added was last time we talked about the time we said, hey, we're trying to really ha- pull people to, once their award comes, you have two years to use those funds and if hey, if you know you're any more upfront trying to request it, otherwise it needs to go back and come before the calling the county council and that. And the shortfall, kind of those initiation and start points both began with the cog executive committee. So the two sentences here are, hey, if someone comes in and says, hey, for these reasons, we are requesting more money and the cog executive committee says, hey, we don't think that's a good reason. You disagree, then that was still allowing you to bring that to this full cog to if you feel like, hey, we were treated unfairly by the cog executive committee or there was something there that would, hey, there's still an opportunity to bring that to the full cog and the county council per per se. So kind of checks and balances between the public sector committee and the city in the full cog as a group, so. And then the part in yellow here just was a random sentence that got left, so that came out as well.
Hang on, let's see.
I believe the last, yeah, and then again, the last one is just the flow chart. So very small changes from the last time we met as far as changes. But we'd have it, the low would be the movement of approval for this tonight to continue the process for this year. Or the discussion or conversation or questions. And bring it into them as well.
I'll make a motion that we approve the local transportation fund program manual. Be a band together.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. All in favor?
I'm.
Any opposed?
Yep. So again, last year when we updated the the policy manual, we put some general timeframes to the schedule as in the first Monday of this month. And that's what this does. This goes through and just assigns actual dates to this year's schedule for the cog. So again, you also received a copy of this and you can go over a new cog website and this is there as well. But just key dates to become aware of is that on Monday, June second, the twenty twenty five, the letters and ten are due. So that's just about a month away. Again, I, hey, we think we're going for this project. There's a form you can download. It's very simple, but that is fast approaching. And as well, on that same day, the call application will will become available so people can start working on compile those and making sure they have what they need. There will be two how to apply meetings, one on Monday, June sixteenth and one on Wednesday, June twenty eighth. There, there's pretty much the same meetings, so not waiting one. I forgot to put the times on here. I'll send those out, ones in the evening and ones in the afternoon. And we try to accommodate everybody's schedule. We kind of just go through the application process and answer questions and make sure everyone's prepared and understand what they need to do for for having a complete application. On Friday, August eighth, applications are due. Again, that includes the detailed patients, the purpose and need statements, plans, maps, photos, any of those other items. So again, I would recommend people read the policy manual to make sure they understand those requirements. If there's any questions, reach out to me. I'm more than willing to work with people to make sure they they meet the requirements for a complete application. Monday, October sixth, we should have project presentations. And now here, here's been through that process. And then after that meeting, all the mayors will be back and be able to score their projects. And on Monday, October twentieth, we will shoot to have a cog recommendation to the county council approved by the cog. And then on Tuesday, November fourth, will be our hope to go to the county council for approval of this year's funding recommendation. So again, those dates are there. We'll make sure to send out lots of emails and stuff as we approach deadlines so that everybody's aware. So again, this isn't necessarily an item for approval, it's just something to be on, make sure everyone get aware of. Are there any general questions as in schedule?
Those interesting blind, you need to attend on train tonight.
It's not required, but it's highly encouraged and recommended. So so, yeah, and if you have in the aft- one in the afternoon, one a- after hours, so that people have meetings that can simply hang it to them or consultants, sometimes attend those meetings as well. We try to make it some availability there.
I would move approval of the twenty twenty five hard project highlight.
And sorry, we don't need it. Yeah, sorry, you're talking to any kind of reviews that and again, we kind of have those dates, but this one, more an FYI or get if someone was aware of something that we happened to miss with a holiday or conference or something that could impact that, but.
And you already sent it out?
Yes, it is sent out and I'll send out times for those how to apply meetings as well. So.
So we generally send out a letter making folks know about the letter and hand, right?
Yeah, we'll send out after this meeting, then we'll send out kind of a call for applications that all of you should receive a mail, should receive an email, have a mail copy with the process, how you're applying letter and those things so that you have that official notice with the schedule, the award amount, all those things will come out to everybody, so.
You have a discussion now? But I want to, but everybody's excited to hear.
Okay, the twenty twenty five allocation amount. Again, last year, we moved to the new process where we're we're transitioning to funding two years in advance. So ideally, those projects that that come in this year that we received applications for would be for construction in the twen- summer of twenty twenty seven. So we're a little bit out again, there'll be some options for a little bit of cash flow there as those funds come in with the intent is that projects are planned for construction for twenty twenty seven. And that dollar amount is anticipated to be approximately up to seventeen million dollars. So again, as we discussed, we knew this would be a bigger year. And we anticipate it to still be a very competitive one. But we do see that dollar amount being approximately seventeen million dollars, so. Just to make sure.
That does include our interest, right?
That.
Or that come later.
That comes later. We do receive those interest funds. Again, some of that where that's we don't, we haven't included that in this number because part of that is the goal is to draw the cog balance down. Right now, the cog is a very large balance. The goal is to bring that down. We have a lot of projects that have been out that are wrapping up. So we haven't accounted for that. If we receive some of that come August and we know what those actual numbers are, we can include some of that and future interest that we receive between now and twenty twenty seven will just be applied to future years award, so.
Reason I made that comment was because last year, as we went to approve, we got our interest allocations or that we do our cog as well, which helps us on some of that stuff. But nobody knew about that until then.
Yeah, so we'll have some of that, but.
That can happen this time too.
We just don't want to count those ages before we know what those actual dollar amounts are, so.
Success is that we get our fund balance down such that we don't earn a lot. That's our goal is to track cash flow. That's why we're moving to two years ahead. So at the time those monies come in, we can get them allocated.
Jesse, we're doing the final walkthrough or probably on on September nineteenth. And that's coming in under budget. So the obligation funds are.
Yeah, yeah, again, whenever those projects come in, again, that's always a great thing and those funds roll back to the cog and again, if we have some of those rollback between now and August. Or even off, I guess it's really October by the time we do the recommendation and those funds will get added back into that and we account for the actual sales tax revenue today. So this one, we try to make a prediction and then we make some adjustments as we can and we go forward through the process, so.
Good, we discussed on that, what's what we're looking for, what we've got. Okay, let's go onto our website. Uh, we're going to be breaking our cog website separately from the C N P O. Again, give visibility to uh, citizens of the valley. So they can see the difference between cog and C N P O and the money between the two. This is a good move as far as I'm concerned because it gives us the visibility as a cog to say this is what we got. Here's all the projects we're funding. Again, it gives visibility to the cog of what we're accomplishing.
So I can send out a link to this to everybody and the time will come that I'm working with I T to get it listed. So you should be able to go to, depending what's under departments and there should be one that reads cash county council of governments. And then this will give the opportunity to hopefully point people here and this will be where you can find, we have the timeline for applications and stuff, so just if anyone go and review this, there's a little program overview and program history. And here's will be a program link with the approved manual from today. Then there's one on meetings. Again, we usually try to encourage people that aren't that aren't on the mailing list to join with the Utah Public Notice website and they can subscribe to receive all the notices for for the cog meetings. So if the general public wants to know when these happen, again, we don't, we don't meet on a first Monday of every month or anything like that. It's very on an as needed basis, but this would allow them to be notified. This has all the mayors right now who consist of the cog. If people, the general public might be had questions. And then we have prior year archives. So again, here's this list, kind of last year, the different projects and what the funding and awarding was. There's the plans, different, the applications, all those things. So these will be updated to include all the future years as we go forward as well. So and then we'll link to the transportation master plan that was done by the cog. And then I'll link to the C N P O website as well, since we do tie it to some of the R T P for some of the funding in the urban areas. We wanted to provide that link there as well. So I'll send that link out as well tomorrow. If you get on there, if you see things or I think I've caught all all the mistakes, maybe you should let me know, but again, we tried to stand up something that the public can go to, find information about the cog, understand what the cog's doing. And hopefully this is a step in the right direction in doing that, so.
It's hard to attest to. We've had in this area, some people really push back on one of his projects. And I would love to been up to have something like this to say, go look at that. It's right here. Go look at it. As everything's transpired, that in there when they did what they did, what we did. And then let's talk. And it's not a bunch of hearsay.
It's nothing fancy. Website design is not my forte, but hopefully it helps.
Show basic information.
The basics, so. Yeah, again, it's so.
Good. Any questions on the website?
Can you ask me?
Yep.
You know what you ought to do on it is, it's just for a feather in the cap for the last ten years, show how much transportation projects has been funded. Just to give people an idea that not necessarily what projects, but just a
The magnitude of it.
Just, you know.
There it is.
The cog.
Yes, and here we do have that.
That's too small for.
And and maybe the next Weaver County has a nice page for theirs and they have a nice map that you can pull up that shows all the projects, what was spent. They have a photo library that highlights some of the projects. So as future years progresses and continues to go, my goal is just to take nothing kind of, again, Jeff had, Jeff had a lot of this on the C N P O website. But a lot of people didn't know that's where they needed to go to have to find the cog stuff outside of this group. So it was the goal of, hey, we can put this out there, it could be on the county website. And it can provide people to go and learn and understand.
Instead of the amount of seventy four million being in that pie chart down with the bottoms. It should be. This was, this is what your taxes have done.
Yeah, so again, I I think it'll mature and stuff over time a little bit and we can add some stuff to to get something out the door, so. Okay, before we jump to the next one, can I add one slip note?
Yeah.
I pass out to a few of you. A few of you got this sheet just barely. If you didn't get one, I got one back via email. If you can just, like, if you wanted these, if you can just review. It's just making sure we have the right contact information for you, your city staff, if you want, if someone that you want in this meeting that's not invited, if there needs to be a change, please just mark this up and I'm just trying to get these back. In this meeting that's not invited, if there needs to be a change, please just mark this up, and I'm just trying to get these back from everybody, so we're getting. The right information with the right people, so if you didn't get one, I already got one from your email, so. You shouldn't have to worry about it, I didn't need, you replied to my email, so.
That's why I don't hope.
You don't have one, so it's only those that got them, and maybe you sent me, we want to. I just tried to do a quick check, so.
Okay. The next is discussion on the recently approved sales and use tax. Uh, what I can tell you, I understand, and council member Ted Wilk can correct me on this, my understanding is that the. We all know that twenty-five percent went transportation, but that went to county transportation, not to the cog. Is that correct?
I'll have to double check that, but that's my understanding of this.
So. But their goal, from what I'm being told by each of them. Is that they are going to continue to look at the cog and try to move more and more of that photo's funds towards us as they can. But they're right now just trying to handle some of this struggles they're having with the county budget. And that's, that's what I am aware of by of that, and how things are going with that, anybody else have any questions on that?
I I just want to make sure I take you correctly, thank you.
Going to county transportation, is that what you said, or county safety?
No, county roads. Safety, seventy-five percent is supposed to, well, nothing's real, I'm saying. There is another fund or there's problems. Uh, and you'll get to ask the chair come around and visit, which he'll explain some of that to you, but twenty-five percent of it is what's going to the county roads.
Twenty-five percent, yeah.
So when the county council passed the resolution, they, by law, they have to specify where it was going. They said twenty-five percent.
Was it prorated over time as well?
Was going to transportation, but it wasn't defined.
And and I'm not picking a fight, or I'm just making sure.
That's the spread from what I have been told. By the chair.
And the county did have. Was it prorated over time?
It, no, they don't get it all at once, you're absolutely right.
It was prorated twenty-five percent this, that year, and then.
That was never finite, like.
That's.
I couldn't remember.
So twenty, it all, it's all going into the county coffers, but twenty-five percent of that's supposed to go. Transportation, but again, the idea of keeping this on the agenda was to continue those discussions, if there's that hope of pushing some. In the cog, the other ways of trying to push it back into. Keeping it into transportation.
Mayor Daines?
Um, I was just gonna say, I think we had expressed hope to the county council that because. The county did have several really good projects come to cog, that maybe that could be a way of. Them funding that, I don't know if they're continuing to look at that, but I.
You're talking cog projects that haven't unincorporated the county.
That's what I would like to address, is we come forward, I'd like to say, twenty-five percent is going to you folks. Are you getting some of that for this, or are you expecting the cog to help build this? That's, I think that's fair for us to ask that question. Okay, Mayor, here's the lesson.
I was just wondering, is there anything binding about that twenty-five percent, or is it just a handshake deal?
Well, it it's in the resolution that the county council passed, so they're. Should be under obligation, I don't know, there's not really anyone to watchdog this, but. They're under obligation out of the proceeds of that new sales tax that they have to put. Twenty-five percent into the eligible list of transportation eligible items, doesn't say that it has to be. In the county, unincorporated county, but they will be under obligation to make sure. If they were ever asked to to prove that that much went to. Uh, but that could be chip seal and unincorporated county, whatever.
But it's not, that's not all an allocation to cog, it's.
No.
It's not, we'll put some of this towards transportation, but.
I mean, one, one of the things that I think over time you can encourage is what Mayor Daines mentioned. The unincorporated county is increasingly asked, you know, when roads are between cities, there's an unincorporated portion. And and Matt gets pulled in, they're trying to solve, I mean, many of the projects we discussed earlier today were just that, they were. Uh, or unincorporated sections between cities, so. You know, we could try to encourage the county council to use that for those type of projects. Where the, where they can be a partner, I mean, I would hope. I would hope, my, if I had my way, it would be that we make sure those funds go to capital projects, I don't care where they are. As long as they're capital capacity investments. That, that's, because that's what's original sales tax was set for, was local roads of regional significance. Or capacity improvements, and if we. If we get that, whether it's through the county council or whatever, I think that would be success. Even if it doesn't come in the cog.
And it's expected to generate. How much? Yeah, maybe in years, six million the first year, because they have three quarters everywhere and not in one. I mean, part of it.
Yeah, it's a pro, it's about three billion, or sorry, about eight mil, that point three percent sales tax is about eight million, give or take. So.
The fact matter is, it's happened, it's where it's at, but we need to remain vigilant. To be observant of what's going on and work with the county council to help them as they go through this process, because. Everyone have indicated they have a desire to move more of that back to where it belongs. And take time, unfortunately, as time goes, so does administrations change. So we need to be aware of it, and all those people work with them to keep their focus on what. We all believe is supposed to happen in the future. Trust but verify.
Continue to be good stewards of those too, so the county council has confidence in our process, and that's one of the reasons. Barbara is here is to kind of.
No, I appreciate the invite, and all these questions are really good questions, and I will definitely take you back to council. And on our next meeting, give the word on it of how things really are with it. And thank you.
I think, I think the chair, when I. Mayor Daines, were you and I sitting there when they were talking about this one?
I was there.
You were there?
Yeah.
They. They said that as they pass this of the twenty-five percent and. That's going to county transportation. They committed, it wasn't part of the resolution that they had, but they committed that they would revisit the proportionality. Uh, it it originally was trying to. Include it in there to gradually have all of it go into transportation, but. Uh, it ended up the way it was, but they wanted to visit, revisit it over time, over the next year and the following years. How much goes back, and I think, as you said, be vigilant, yeah, it goes back to transportation, but it it truly is this group's only. Funding mechanism.
It is.
And and.
And we need to keep reminding them, we have no way to get any other funding. And look at the cost of our projects.
Yeah, so.
Complexity of our projects are not going down, they're exponentially increased.
Our vigilance, as you said.
Yeah.
Hey, great, thank you.
Any other discussion on that?
Matt has something to add, I think.
Thank you, Matt.
Matt?
I just want to, I think Jeff said it best, but it it was for transportation, so. Mayor, you mentioned that's for county roads, that's my understanding even. That'd be great, I would love that, but my understanding is that's not, it's not, that's not coming straight to me. That was for transportation, so I don't think that that money has been earmarked, whether it be for cog, whether it be for the county, whether it be. For any transportation, I think that that's undecided at this point, so I don't want. I I want everyone to understand that, yeah, it it could go to cog, it could come to the county, you know, for projects that. No fault works, it's too many capital, but that I, that is not decided at this point, so. Right now, I, that, there's zero of that money coming in for me to do capital projects. So that's, I think there's still room for us to, as a cog body or individuals or however, to go petition the council for that money.
It sounds like it's cash counting the county.
So, so Matt, yeah, so I I know none of it is coming through the cog process, but you're also saying.
It may, it it it's, I think it could, I think with some of you. I I, but I don't think that that's, I don't think that it, I think you guys made that last motion. And put that in there, that's why they wanted twenty-five to go for transportation. But but to my knowledge, and and I can do more research, I think they're probably having to start collecting that, but they start well, so.
Okay, they're getting vigilance because, obviously.
Yeah.
Thanks. We're. We're being told two different stories. Uh, I've got people, Chair X is one of them, so, well, yes, we chair.
If they do, great, and and I think from my perspective, we will understand that, hey, that is money coming to us and we would probably. You know, work with cog and and make sure that we're spending down on capital projects, because I do agree with the chair, but. A- as of right now, that's not just, that's not the case, so I think there's still hope that some of that could fall into the cog.
Hey, this is, this is why we're writing numbers on the board. How do we verify?
What are we gonna write down?
No, we, we are, that's why we're all confused.
In the, in the county council meeting, there was numbers on the board, none of them said cog.
Yeah, I I think there's, there's a huge difference between the two, but I appreciate some advocacy from.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's open as such transportation.
And they talked about a process forthcoming. Okay, and.
Let's not get into. Uh, assumptions here, because you know what assumptions mean. Let's move on from that, and we'll try to dig out some better. Uh, trust but verify, unless we will verify at this point, to see if you get a better feel of what's going on.
So Mayor, I have a, what kind of timeframe do you think that would, I think?
Was it time counties?
Actually, aren't they talking about it, it's three quarters of the year, each year it started.
It only started in April, April is all, the county probably has not had any, the county also wants this. My understanding from where we get, because we get this cog sales tax a safe way, is even like April's tax revenues. Don't come into the county coffers until June, so there is that delay, so to this point in time, there's no additional sales.
I will take the action to start digging into this and getting some answers from the folks at the county level. Their accounting department and everything else to say, okay, exactly where to hit go and how much. And then I'll get an email sent out. And then we'll get the numbers we're trying to find. Anything else? Okay, I forgot to mention that, uh, Mayor Booth Hughes couldn't make it, and I called him personally and apologized, he had a commitment, so I finished using, I need to do that. Any other discussions? Violent intended motion to adjourn.